It is six o'clock. If you would, please stand. Chair recognizes Todd, and Todd, I'm gonna let you say your last name. First United Pentecostal shirt.
No, United Methodist.
United Methodist?
So it's Pentecostal here, so that is...
The Pentecostals came out of the Methodist tradition, so well done, my friend. Well done, Mayor. That's all right. First United Methodist, thank you for having me. Shall we pray? Almighty and everlasting God, as we gather for yet another day with colleagues and friends, we are honored to be called upon to lead in this unique place and time. Though we may be weary at times, we seek the energy and strength to see to fulfillment all that we have started. We humbly come before you this day, understanding that the conversations, intentions, and decisions of this day impact not only our own moral character, but the people whom we have the awesome privilege and responsibility of serving. We recognize that our actions and agendas have consequences, some of which we can't fully understand and appreciate until sometime in the future. And the anxiety with which we may at times experience has the ability to influence our conduct, our judgment, our very being. As such, many of us here may come to you regularly seeking guidance, wisdom, and compassion, or other blessings to aid us in the business before us. At all times, though, we give you thanks and are assured that you hear and respond to our prayers, though not always in ways that we might understand. We confess that all too often we allow other external factors and motives to drive us, allowing us at times to lose focus on the enormous opportunity each of us have as leaders, no matter our affiliation or background. And we confess that it is easy for us to fall into the trap of being served rather than to serve. So this day, most gracious and loving God, may we conduct ourselves with dignity, respect, and a desire to understand one another. As we experience your presence with us today, I pray that your spirit of peace, community, goodwill, and vision might wash over each person gathered here, especially in those most difficult and divisive of moments. And at the end of this day, may each of us be confident that we have walked in your grace, exemplifying the best of who we are, that we may honor each other, and above all, give you glory in all that we do. This day and always, we give thanks especially for the birthday of one of our councilwomen today, Ms. Peggy Dean. We pray these in all things, in your holy name. Amen.
You can tell I attend first United Methodist church.
At this time, Councilmember White will lead us into place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated. Okay, at this time, we do not have any proclamations, awards, or presentations. So I will move to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Move to other council actions. We move to the public hearings. We will open a public hearing to consider the approval and request of PTCAA Texas for annexation. Mr. Brenly.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The council approved the first reading of this ordinance for annexation back on August the 13th of this year. The property involved in the request is located in the northwest corner of the intersection of Kermit Highway and Western 338. At this present time, commercial and industrial use development is being built on the property. It's a truck stop with related uses. Land use in the general area does consist of commercial industrial development and vacant land. The applicant and the owner of the property is PTCAA Texas LP, and the purpose of the annexation request is to incorporate approximately 7.1 acres into the city of Odessa. The current area of the city limits is approximately 52 square miles. The total area of this request being approximately 7.1 acres does put this area within the annexation statutes that allow a maximum of annual annexation of up to 30 percent of the city's area. The City of Odessa Comprehensive Plan does state that the city should strive for orderly city boundaries and utility service area, and annexing properties that are adjacent to the city limit line would be considered logical boundary extensions of the city limit area. Service plan has been provided for the proposed annexation, and this was prepared by the city's legal staff, and this is in accordance with state law requirements. Also, in accordance with this annexation request, we do have a related original zoning request of light industrial. This request is compatible with adjacent land uses in this area. It is not contrary to the land use plan of the City of Odessa's Comprehensive Master Plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to these two requests, and the planning staff does concur with these recommendations for approval, and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Brenly? Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time, I will open up the floor. For anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item, if you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Can motion? Give a second. A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by Beaton Bow Holmes. Mr. Brenly.
Yes, sir. The city mailed out 19 notices related to this request. We did not have any notices returned. We did not receive any written protests, and we did receive one written approval. The property involved in this request is along East Loop 338. It's between 87th Street and proposed 100th Street. The property is included in the concept plan for the Radish Ridge addition. This site is currently zoned special dwelling district and also retail, and the site is vacant. Land use in the area does consist of single-family residential development and vacant land. The applicant and the owner of the property, in this case, is Beaton Bow Holmes, and the purpose of the rezone request from special dwelling district to retail, and also from retail to special dwelling district, is to match the zoning districts in this area, and it also would match the proposed amended concept plan and would facilitate additional single-family residential development and supporting retail uses in this area. The proposed rezone request is not contrary to the established land uses in the area, and it's not contrary to the land use plan of the City of Odessa's master plan. The proposed zoning districts will be located adjacent to other single-family residential developments, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request, and planning staff does concur with these recommendations for approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Brenly?
Yes, so track on your map here, track one and two are the first two that are being rezoned from retail to special dwelling?
Yes, ma'am.
And track three is being rezoned from special dwelling to retail?
No, other way around.
Other way around?
Track one is being rezoned from special dwelling to retail. Two and three are from retail to special dwelling district.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, well, this is a public hearing, so at this point, I will open up the floor for anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion? Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Brenly.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Item three, we'll open a public hearing for fiscal year 2019-20 budget. Ms. Muncy.
Good evening, Council Mayor. This public hearing will be to review our fiscal year 1920 budget. If you'll recall, council went through a workshop on this on July 26, 2019. The proposed budget was filed with the city secretary on August 9th of 2019 and placed on the city's website. Sections 102.006 and 102.007 of the local government code require that the city council conduct a public hearing on the budget prior to its approval, which will take place on September 10th. That's your next regularly scheduled council meeting. The budget includes total revenues for all funds of $245 million and total expenditures for all funds of almost $235 million. Some highlights from our budget is a property tax rate at .4766, which is the same rate that was adopted last year. We are proposing, and it is on the agenda tonight, a solid waste rate increase of 2.5 percent. And this is needed due to the expanded Odessa development increased cost of our purchasing garbage trucks and other operational costs. We did provide a 3 percent raise to all full-time employees meeting requirements. We increased our budget for the annual street maintenance up to 5.6 million, keeping with the recommendation of our traffic master plan. We had a 1.2 increase to some of our water sewer one-time projects, and we had increased funding to outside agencies out of our hotel motel tax revenues. I would like to point out our general fund of expenditures of 99.4 million. The police department budget is 29.7, and our fire department is 25.8. So we are setting a tax rate that is the same as last year, and that amount will generate tax revenue for the general fund of 32.7 million. And you can see that we use a great deal of our sales tax revenues to help cover our public safety budget. Be glad to answer any other questions if I haven't gone over everything you wanted.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from council?
So I think it's really important to reiterate that, that our property taxes, which are only 19 percent of the total property tax, 15 to 19 percent, depending on what the other entities do, of the total property tax that is paid, it'll be 15 to 19 percent, and of that property tax, the 32.7 million that we get for operations, our police and fire are 56 million. So I really hope that people understand that the property taxes don't even cover, I mean, they barely cover police and hardly any of fire, so you know, you get a lot of people that discuss how high our property taxes are. We just want to be sure people understand that those don't even cover our public safety.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, this is a public hearing, so at this time, I will open up the floor for anyone who would like to comment. Sure, come on up. If you will, just give us your name and address.
I apologize for my appearance, too. Came straight from work.
Came straight from work.
Yes, sir.
And you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. My name's Clayton Smith. I'm from Odessa, Texas, 3616 Springbrook Drive. I've been in this town for 35 years, almost 36 of my life. I was born and raised here. I've watched a lot of things as far as with the taxes and how they have their ups and downs. I understand we have an influx right now with people that are coming in from out of town, and we got the oil field. Oil field has its ups and downs as well. We also have some times where it subsides or plateaus. Right now, we're on a spike, but a lot of the rigs are laying down. My parents own two properties, and it's already hard enough for them to foot the bill on the property taxes that they have, as well as make ends meet. My mother's worked more than multiple jobs for X amount of years, 18 years of my life. She now is, I believe, working for three different companies. I'm sorry, I thought I silenced that earlier. But my point is, is we work really hard in this town. I know other people don't get paid enough, especially our public servants. I spent a little time with the fire department. I've been with the post office. I've been with a lot of the public servants positions. Very familiar with the police department. Got family that worked for them, so no, you know, no aught towards them as far as how they're surviving. I do know whenever you increase and constrain things for people, it puts us in a bond. We already have an issue with not being able to, I guess, manage our times. You got I-20, Business 20, 191, all these, working on the infrastructure, on the roads all at one time. This is an increase for our fire department and our police to be used. That's what assesses a lot of the wrecks that we're dealing with. I think if you do a little more time management and start to actually utilize it and work on one project at a time, open up a road so that way we have good flow, you're not going to have as many accidents. You're not going to have as many uses for these other things. We had our courtroom, our courthouse, it needed all this maintenance. We can't even keep up with the maintenance on it. We wait till it gets to the end, and then all of a sudden, we gotta build a new building. And then we have people that don't consider that, and they want to push it through even though the public says it's not okay. So my opinion is, I think that we're not utilizing the money in the ways that we need to. We need to have a little bit more, I guess, assessment as to how we're going to use it and use it a little bit more intelligently, if. That's not stepping on anybody's toes.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, we'll go ahead and close this public hearing, and we will move to the next agenda item, which is open a public hearing on a proposed tax rate and to consider levying a tax for the 2019 tax year. Ms. Muncy.
Council Mayor, this is to open the public hearing for the proposed tax rate. Property Tax Code 26.06 requires two public hearings if a tax rate is proposed that exceeds the effective tax rate. The proposed tax rate of .47.6601 exceeds the effective tax rate, and will increase total property tax revenues by 22.7 percent over the preceding year. The second public hearing will be held on September 10th, 2019, at your regularly scheduled city council meeting. The proposed tax rate provides for the continuation of 20 percent general residential homestead exemption, the senior citizen exemption of $15,000, the $5,000 to $12,000 disabled veterans exemption, the $5,000 exemption for disabled persons, and other state mandated expenses, exemptions, all of which have been included in the calculation of total taxable values for the 2019 tax year. All exemptions for the 2019 tax year total over $2 billion. The following, I'll give you a comparison of the tax rates. Our effective tax rate is .394648. Our proposed tax rate is .476601, which is below the rollback rate. As we mentioned a while ago, we fall into the 15 to 19 percent of the total tax rate. The final vote on the tax rate will take place on September 23rd and September 24th. Let me give you the total taxable value for the 19 tax year is $10,113,172,830. Again, for an average homeowner, this is information obtained from the appraisal district, is $144,018 this year versus $129,664 last year, which relates to an increase of $68.41 a year. And again, this will generate more tax revenue than what we had in the prior year. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from council? Okay, this is a public hearing, so we do have a couple of cards. Mr. Smith, would you like to? Okay, I just wanted to check. The next is Larry Robinson, 2218 East 8th Street. Are you Mr. Robinson?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I just thought there was somebody else.
No, I thought you said Mr. Smith, so. Good evening, Councilman Mayor. I come to appeal to lower the proposed tax rate. A flat tax rate in this setting is a tax increase to every property owner and ultimately to renters who rent from property owners. Odessa has an increase of revenue from increased tax valuation to the tune of 22 percent plus another 3.6 percent year-to-date increase in revenue from sales tax. Hotel motel revenues have increased. This is a tax we place on ourself when we travel to another city, but is still a burden we place on residents at some point. This added revenue benefits Odessa by the allowable use of offsetting burdens that might otherwise be placed directly on the public. Please lower the tax rate and use the revenue wisely. Please lower the rate to .4425. This will result in a yield over last year of more than 9 percent, which was roughly the same as last year. When and if this local economy starts to slide, the residents will be asked to open their purses even wider for the funding of a government that is too involved and cannot adjust quickly, and this will happen as property rates diminish in that situation. Please lower this rate. Don't leave it at the current rate, which creates a burden on taxpayers while being a great benefit to the city. Do not leave it flat. Just because the word "flat" does not properly denote the increase it will represent. Don't do this because it's been done before or just because we can do it. Please look out for us, your constituents. Over a year ago, or last year, a little over a year ago, I was standing here battling the same flat tax rate. You, the council that were members here last year, were very happy with the 9.6 yield of a flat tax rate for that year. You add the 9.6 to this year's 22 percent, and you get almost 31 percent over two years. That's a lot of money, and I think getting back that 22 and a half percent is exorbitant, and it may be needed in another year if things were to start to slide. So I'm just asking not to tax away the 30 percent over two years' period from the Odessa taxpayers. Just if you would consider, please lower in the tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Is there anyone else that'd like to comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Next, we will move to ordinances. Consider the approval of the solid waste rate change. Ms. Muncy.
We're tag teaming. Now, this ordinance, this is the first approval, is to increase the solid rate change, solid waste rate change. As I mentioned before, we've had increased costs in equipment and maintenance for our solid waste department. This would be across all avenues of rate at 2.5 percent. I think this makes about a 50 cent difference on residential families. It's a little bit more for our commercials, depending on how many times a week and what size dumpsters that they have. This is a rate increase that we haven't had since 2016-17. This is the first one we've done since then. And we expect it to, once approved, it would be effective October 1st, and it would be reflected on the November 2019 bills. I think we estimated this increase to give us a little over $350,000. And Philip was going to talk to you a little bit about what some of our costs have gone up on solid waste.
Council, Mr. Mayor, as a reminder to council that the solid waste fund is an enterprise fund. It's not tax-funded, so it has to be a self-sufficient fund. Over the last three years, we have not had an increase to the solid waste fund, but through that three-year period, we have seen a 37 percent increase in the maintenance costs for our solid waste vehicles. This is partly due to us having to outsource mechanic work due to staffing levels being low. Along with that, we've also purchased two additional solid waste trucks, which came at a cost of over $500,000 for two trucks. We've also added 1,215 dumpsters to the city as well, which is an additional $500,000 that we've spent from this fund as well. The city is also conducting a solid waste master plan at this time. This solid waste plan will help the city look at our operations, our routing, and our maintenance, and our equipment to ensure that we're purchasing and operating as we should. Initial reports from that study show that a 2.5 percent increase is proposed, which should come out of that study and what should be proposed for the city. So Ms. Muncy and I are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions from council?
1,215 dumpsters.
Okay, we do have one citizen who would like to speak. Mr. Robinson? You'll have three minutes, Mr. Robinson.
Okay, thank you. Lisa's on time today. The solid waste increase is unfair to business and residents alike. Five dollars to residents, fifty dollars to businesses, too much. The fifty dollars charged to businesses, business will pass its additional costs through the business and back to the end user, resident, or another business, with ultimately the resident as the end tax increase payer. Please enlighten me also, and this is from a long time ago, as to the nature of Odessa's agreement with Republic, and if the city does to this date continue to receive revenue back from Republic. And if so, how much, and how it benefits the residents?
Do we receive anything from Republic?
Sir, if they operate a truck within the city, they have to pay a license fee, which is typically, I believe, it's $100 per truck. So it's not a significant amount that we receive from a public.
There's no longer a percentage. I think when Mayor Perryman did this, there was a specific percentage. That no longer exists.
We don't make anything off the dump?
Not that I'm aware of. I get that information from council. We can pull that contract. But as it relates to that contract as well, we did see an increase in our tipping fees to the tune of 6 percent this year from Republic.
It'd be an old contract. I'll give you a few days. Thank you very much, but I'm just asking not to put any more tax burden on the taxpayers in view of the additional revenues from property taxes, fees, city sales tax. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Okay, I do not have any more cards for comments, so I will entertain a motion.
Can I ask a question right quick? What was the estimated amount for residential and for business increase? On this proposal?
On the proposal, so the standard pickup for residential is two times per week. That would be an increase of 50 cents per month, and a commercial account with a two-time-per-month pickup would be $2.58 increase per month.
Because I think Mr. Robinson was thinking it was five dollars a month, right? Is that what you said, sir?
Yes, I have the wrong information.
No, no, maybe it is 50 cents.
Excuse me, the last time we changed rates was 2016, and that was only on commercial. The last time we changed on residential was...
Any other questions? Okay, I will entertain a motion. So moved. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is consider remitting chapter one of the City of Odessa Code of Ordinances entitled General Provisions, Article 1-4, City Council, by adding Division 3 Code of Conduct. Ms. Brooks.
This ordinance was proposed to just set the guidelines of the ethics ordinance. At this time, I think council would like to make a motion on this.
I'd like to motion to table it at this time.
Second.
Second. All in favor of tabling, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes to table. Excuse me, item seven. Consider revision to the City of Odessa ordinances that adds a section addressing excessive absenteeism. Mr. Patton.
Great, good evening. This is the second and final reading of my section of the ordinance that is for the Golf Course Advisory Committee. This is for an attendance requirement, and I think, as I mentioned as the last time, three absences within the one year, because we meet every other month, that will kick you off of this board. Now, one thing I do want to add that I didn't make a point of the first time is that when we have a person that is in a situation where there are excessive absences due to a major health issue or something, what we would like to do is keep them on the board until they continue to serve. But they would be kicked off, until they find a replacement. It would be left up to the council to put them back on the board after their sickness or their reasoning for being out for so long, or they can be replaced. And that would be something that we would take care of as more or less a policy. But I do have a situation of a really good board member, and they're going to be battling for their life for, actually, their wife for a little while, and he's going to miss the... for their life, actually their wife, for a little while, and he's going to miss a couple of really important meetings, but he does want to continue to serve. And I told him, he will go off the board, but it'll be up to y'all to put him back on the board. He wants to continue to serve as soon as he gets finished with this portion of his life. So the other portion of the other boards, I think, that were added on here, they're just riding on my good coattail of ideas, and I don't know who did that. It says Norma. Somebody is selling my ideas.
Let me read this ordinance.
Okay.
Proven ordinance to add an attendance requirement for all city boards that have regularly scheduled annual meetings to attend one half of those regularly scheduled meetings.
Okay, so that would be the amendment of Mr. Patton's ordinance.
Riding on his coat.
Are there any other questions before we make this motion? Go ahead, and I will let you make that. Form a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Patton.
Thank you.
Under resolutions, consider a resolution declaring the number of inhabitants of the City of Odessa, which have increased since the last census. Mr. Brennland?
Yes, sir. As the council is well aware, it's been over nine years since the last official U.S. census, and it will probably be at least two years before the results of the current census are received. While many statutory and regulatory provisions of state law that apply to cities of a certain size explicitly refer to population as defined by the most recent census, others may be adjusted as the number of inhabitants grows during the interval decade. Population growth and continued development have been occurring in Odessa since the most recent U.S. census. Local government entities, as well as developers, typically rely on updates to the last official census by the federal government, and their last official estimate was 120,568 inhabitants, as well as regular periodic updates from the Texas State Demographer, and his last estimate was 119,984 inhabitants. And they use these to determine what current number of inhabitants are within the city limits of Odessa. The planning department also has an estimate. It is what we consider our most recent estimate, and it's determined by city building and permits, and that is determined at this time to be 124,751 inhabitants. The average of these three estimates is 121,768 inhabitants, and this is what we're requesting the city council to approve as the current number of inhabitants within the City of Odessa. And be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Brennland? Okay, I will entertain a motion now.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Under miscellaneous, any points to boards, Mr. Maldon? Okay. I do not have any more cards for citizens' comments on non-agenda items, but we do need to go into executive session.
Mayor, before we could, I think we have students in the audience.
Yes.
And I'd just like to acknowledge him. Are you all from, pardon me? Which, whose teacher?
Ms. Barbara Edwards.
Okay, I just wanted to acknowledge him.
Welcome.
Thank you all for being here.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are now in executive session as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultant consultation with attorney. And we go into executive session at 6:35. Go ahead, call a meeting back to order. Need a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor coming out, please say aye.
Aye.
It is 7:08. We did not take any action while in executive session. This concludes the, this concludes our meeting, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
I sounded like a snake.